Good afternoon. This is July 30th, Special Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any items contained within this agenda. We just have one item on the agenda, and that'll be an update from the County Public Health Director, Board of Supervisors, to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19, and taking any necessary actions based upon the updates. Good afternoon. Denise Burley.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
You're right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you please do that?
Supervisor Gould? Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Angus?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Denise, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll start off as I usually do with the numbers. There have been a total of 2,882 cases in the county to date, 962 recovered. The average age of cases is now 48.4, and the average age of deaths is 77.1, so dropping slightly each week in each report. I do want to make note of an error from the Monday meeting. We had a table error, our Excel table error, and so the total case count from 7/19 to 7/25 reported at that meeting was not correct. I stated 377 cases for last week's totals when the actual number is 409. So while it doesn't show a significant drop, it does show from the previous week at least a leveling. So some still good information, but we need to continue on with our efforts.
I have a question.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
What was the week? I thought the week was the 19th through the 25th.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Well, when I added the cases up, it came to 434. I've reported cases.
Were you adding up the cases Supervisor Johnson through our press releases?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to address that a little later in the presentation, and just hold me to that. Would that be okay? Okay. I appreciate that. But definitely circle back to it, but I believe I'll cover that a little bit later on. So next, the next item to report is the hospital status update, which as you've probably had an opportunity to review, we continue to see basically the same picture each week and each day with HRMC pushing against that normal capacity, ICU bed capacity, with zero beds available. And I did, just so you know, reach out to Valley View Medical Center from the question, I believe Supervisor Angus posed that at the Monday meeting, and have not received a reply back, so I'll continue to try to get an answer about accepting COVID patients and their status right now. Are there any questions, other questions on the hospital status update?
Any questions?
Okay. All right. So I'd like to give you an update on the Bullhead City community testing event from last Friday and Saturday. We did get all of the results back from North Country Healthcare. So I'll start off and just kind of read through all the data that they've provided to us and answer any questions thereafter. They had a total of 200 community clients registered for the event. They had 100 appointments for each day available. Approximately 175 clients were seen, a total of 100 specimens were collected. 90 specimens were collected on Friday, 81 specimens were collected, excuse me, on Saturday. The report, the results were reported out by Monday. So good, quick turnaround time. I believe they use LabCorp for those services, so they don't have quite the backlog that Sonora Quest does. We have a 14.5% positivity rate of all of those, I'm sorry, skipped over a few things, I'm sorry. 12 of the 90 tests collected on Friday were positive, and 12 of the 81 tests collected on Saturday were positive, for a total of 24. And that leads to a 14.5% positivity rate, which anything over 10% is considered high. And right now, if you were to look at the ADHS website just for PCR testing, our rate is about 12%. Number positive with symptoms and no known contact was nine. Number positive with symptoms and known contact, eight. Number positive with history of prior COVID infection and no symptoms, there was one individual. The number positive with no symptoms, three. And number with no symptoms information recorded, they had three as well. So I think, you know, overall, it was a relatively successful event for Bullhead City, achieved, I believe, what they wanted to, although I know they're continuing to have discussions about entertaining additional events. And I don't know the logistics of those and whether or not those will be symptomatic or community blitz style, but I do know that they're having conversations about continuing to expand testing in their community. Any questions on the Bullhead City community testing event? Anyone have any questions?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You said the test results came back Monday. Why are we just not getting the results on Thursday?
They were actually, they still have four outstanding results as of Tuesday when they reported to us, so we were waiting for all the results to come in before reporting to you. So we did ask them this morning if they had the final tally, and they did provide that this morning to us.
Were those 24 people included in our press releases counts?
If they were, if we received their lab results, then yes, they would have been confirmed cases in our counts.
I guess personally, if we're carrying them in our counts, I would think that, I mean, I would like to know the results when they come in. I'm sure that, you know, Supervisor Angus probably would be interested in that, too. That's all, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Okay. So Supervisor Johnson, just so I understand correctly, would you like those results, even if they're not complete, but as they come in?
Yes, I believe so, especially if we're counting them, because it makes a difference if we say, you know, Bullhead had, you know, 38 positive cases, 24 were from the blitz or something, just so people know.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Okay. So a staffing, oh, sorry, Supervisor Gould?
Denise, did they give you the numbers of people that they tested that were symptomatic and the people that were asymptomatic?
Yes, they broke down some of those numbers for us, like number positive with symptoms, no known contact, nine. Number positive with symptoms and a known contact, that was eight. So you were referring to, I think, asymptomatic in our last conversation, and the number positive with no symptoms was three of the 171 specimens collected.
How many of the 171 were people that were asymptomatic?
Let's see, do we know that number? And that would just be the three? Okay. And that would just be the three Supervisor Gould?
They only had three people that were non-symptomatic that they tested, and all three tested positive?
That is what it records here, but let's, we will follow up with North Country Healthcare on that question, okay?
In the phone meeting that we had at 11 o'clock, they said something about 71% of the people tested were symptomatic.
Sorry.
But I may have got that wrong.
Supervisor Gould, I wasn't part of that phone call. I might need Kyle Fraser to answer that question.
Okay.
Hello Supervisor Gould. So I don't remember 71%. Can you clarify what might have been heard?
I thought they said that 71% of the people tested had symptoms.
I don't have that on my data sheet, but we'll have to get back with North Country to clarify exactly how many of the 171 that were collected was asymptomatic and who were asymptomatic. I don't have that number on the sheet, but we can get that for you. But yeah, I don't remember them providing that on the 11 o'clock phone call, so my mistake if I didn't write that one down.
And I could have heard it incorrectly also.
Okay. But we'll see if we can get that numbers to clarify, so we can get that to you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
I just want to clarify what Supervisor Gould just asked, because I think I missed heard Supervisor Gould. So was your question, how many of the total number of people who were tested asymptomatic, not just the people who tested positive? You want to know how many people showed up for the test that had no symptoms?
Correct Supervisor Angus. I want to know how many people showed up to be tested that were asymptomatic.
Right, and that was more than three?
Yeah. Yes, and thank you. We'll clarify that and get back with you with that information.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, just a staffing update. We continue to interview candidates for the remaining CHES 1 positions and the public health nursing positions, and we will keep you, keep the board informed of progress in this area as we fill those positions. So at this point, we still continue to have, I believe, four community health education specialist 1 positions, four nurse, public health nurse positions, and the other positions are, have been filled. Okay, so moving on. Talking about data, you know, I'm sorry Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. I've got a question. Roughly about a third of those folks that have contacted the virus have recovered. Do we have the information of the areas of which we've identified, broken down to the recoveries?
I don't know that we have that at this point. I'll see if we can actually get that, okay?
Thank you very much.
Broken out by service area, correct?
Yeah, I was just curious as to the number of people in the Kingman area or Lake Evans or Bullhead area that have recovered as a percentage of those cases that are ongoing. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, all right. So as you know, we've been at the data business here for a while, and we've made changes over time, both to the dashboard and the reporting that we've put out there. And given what we know today and questions posed by the public, the media, and the board, we have a proposal to you that we'd like to incorporate additional data into the website, and then also propose a report schedule to replace the current methods that we have in place, which as you know, you receive three different reports in a day from us. You receive the hospital capacity report separate from a daily report, and then the case summary at the end of the day, which is used for the press release. And we would like to streamline that process. I believe we're spending a considerable amount of time on at least two of those reports, and we want to focus our energies and time on investigations and things that are really our highest priority. We understand the need for data and want to continue to provide that. We have a different method for delivering that that we'd like to propose. So Supervisor, County Manager, I don't know if you want to add anything to that preface to the conversation.
Madam Chair, no Denise. You identified it well and outlined it clearly, so please proceed.
All right, thank you. So what we're planning to do is you've received either via email or in front of you a copy of, it's a one-page document, and on the left-hand side of the document, it lists webpage, and in the right-hand column is data report or daily report. So what we want to do is make sure that all data, of course, is generated and reported by the health department. We want to provide updates to and add information to the webpage itself, and then we're offering to modify basically that, that daily report to be a fact sheet that will include some visual information, and we provide that Monday through Friday at this point for, for your use. And it'll obviously be first sent to the board before it's ever made public, and once sent, it'll be utilized to update the website numbers, and we will also save it as a PDF, and people can link to that particular document so they can access it as well. But what you see on the sheet is a list of all the data points that we would like to have on the webpage in some form, and we will work with IT, and IT is here as well today if there are any IT-specific questions. I believe Nathan's back behind me, but to add those, to have that information available on the webpage, and I will place this right here so it can be seen. And then on the right-hand side, again, the daily report that can go to the board, which will include some additional visuals and different ways to reflect the information, show the information, which might make it easier to read as well. So if I can give you a few minutes to look at that, or a minute or so to review that if you haven't had a chance already.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
It would have been a lot more helpful if we'd have received this ahead of time so we could look it over and maybe if, if we're able to see a test run of what you're talking about, we could send this, you know, it doesn't have to be correct numbers, say, okay, here's, here's what we have, this is what we want to send you. The same thing with the webpage, because I would have, you know, not knowing how the webpage is going to change, and I'd have quite a few questions of Nathan on that, I guess.
Okay.
Maybe if, maybe we could wait, if we can get that information, at least for me, it would be easier, you know, visually to see it, and then maybe make a decision on Monday, but it's kind of hard with just having two lists and really no documentation to say this is what we're at now, this is what you're going to get later.
Okay, I understand.
And is Nathan up there, did you say?
He is, yes. And he's available to speak.
I have a few questions of Nathan, I guess, or Mr. Daniels.
Good afternoon.
The webpage that we have now, that's not something you created. Is that something that you got from one of our vendors?
Supervisor Johnson, that's correct. In order to, you know, quickly respond as quickly as we possibly could, one of the companies we do business with for our geographic information system, Esri, they created a COVID-19 resource hub template for pretty much all of their customers throughout the world to use as a resource to, I guess, make it easy for organizations and municipalities to rapidly respond. So we basically identified the template and modified it for our needs, and we use it to represent the numbers. So to answer your question, yes, we use a product and a template that was not designed by us. It was designed by Esri.
So would that mean that we wouldn't have the things that Director Burley's asking? I don't know, because I would like to see a, you know, a picture, a snapshot of what you have now, and then a snapshot of, you know, something that's proposed. But you're not able to change a whole lot on that page, are you?
There is some levels of flexibility, and there is obviously some functionality in there that's purposely intended to create design choices and options, but it's not something where it can become whatever anybody wants it to become. There are limited features and functionality in the, in the template, so it's not completely flexible in every possible way. So there are definitely some limitations. If you would like us to create a visual of what the changes Denise is attempting to create, what we can do is we can clone the existing page, and we can make some changes and then share that link with you so that you can see it in like a real-time web, a webpage of what the proposed changes would look like. And then if you guys approve, or if the board approves the new design, then we can publish that and make that available. Or we can apply those changes to the existing live page.
Okay. Do we know, you probably don't know yet, will this new change fit, because I know you have a format there, and certain things fit and certain things don't.
I don't know that yet. I'm going to have to work with, my team's going to have to work with the public health department to understand what changes they're planning on implementing to see how well they'll work inside the template. I couldn't tell you that right now.
Okay. I guess those are the only questions I had, Madam Chair. It's hard for me to make a decision today when I, when I can't visually see what we're talking about.
Okay. Nathan, I have a question. How long will it take your department to make those changes if you do a clone hub for us to take a look at?
I wouldn't imagine it's going to take very long. I mean, I would have to look and see what it is they want to add or remove, and what design changes we're thinking, we're considering. But it shouldn't be, it should be something we can do fairly quickly. I can't imagine it's going to take an extremely large amount of time, and primarily because we're not going to be coding that and writing that ourselves, we're going to be using the interface that Esri developed to make those changes.
So we could have it definitely before the next COVID meeting?
The next COVID meeting's Monday?
Yes.
I guarantee we can have it ready by then.
Okay. Any other questions for Nathan? Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you. To answer Supervisor Johnson's question related to having the information in advance, Supervisor Johnson, your point is well taken. I will take the blame for that. I was reviewing this info with Denise literally just prior to coming down to this update. Our intent all along was to act on the feedback and the comments we've heard from all of you board members, as well as the media and the public, update the webpage, and ensure that the daily report is consistent with it. So we wanted to at least run it by you today, knowing that you didn't have a whole lot of time to look at it. We'll come back Monday with the layout and the demo that you just expressed a desire to see with Nathan, and we will also have a layout with visual aids of the daily report on Monday as well. So we will do everything we can to get it to you Monday prior to the update, meaning mid-morning sometime, give you at least a couple hours to look at it, think through it, and be able to provide direction and feedback to us. And hopefully we will conclude the update on Monday with a clear direction from the board as to what's, what additional revisions are needed, or if you're happy with what we present, and we can run with it from there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. How would this affect the way that our news releases are put out? Will these, will this change our outlook on press releases? And if so, I'd like to ask our communications director questions about how he will make all this work with what he's doing.
Certainly, absolutely. Supervisor Bishop, Madam Chair. What we're looking to do is provide one report a day to the board, and make sure that we incorporate much of the requested information from the public and all these other sources on the website so it can be easily accessible by any. And then all of that information can be used moving forward for any kind of press release that's presented out to the media, and it can be used on any social media site, because all of the information, of course, will come from us, and you can pick and choose that information, if you wish, to present out to your constituents in any form that you want, but it'll come from our webpage or from the daily report, which is, all of that information will be included in that, in that webpage as well.
Okay. Will the information still be slightly off from what the Department of Health on the Arizona level puts out?
Yes. And there are a number of reasons for that that I'd like to share real quick and briefly. The first is that, as you know, the Arizona Department of Health Services includes probable cases in their case counts. And in that light, we do not. We only count confirmed PCR test, diagnostic testing results on our webpage, and the same with deaths. We only can include confirmed cases, confirmed deaths, and ADHS also includes probables on their webpage. So that would be your first, your first change there. Overall, you know, we've been working off of this two-pronged system in the past, and that's been somewhat problematic because data is very dynamic. It changes, and it changes every day based on those cases coming in, cases going out within our jurisdiction, right? So if a case isn't in our jurisdiction and it comes to our department, we transfer it to another county where it belongs into that jurisdiction. Again, we talk about deduplication of cases. So that, that number, so that goes back to Supervisor Johnson's question about how that number differs if you were to add up all of the press release cases, right? But actually, the number is 409, so if, that's the difference between what happens in a week of cases going in and out for a variety of reasons, and it's not a controllable thing, it's just part of the process that's used in the data reporting piece. So we're trying to work through this one system where we know that data coming in is not a running total, you know, of, we had X number of cases yesterday and we're reporting X number today, but the total for each of these communities is this, because that's the actual case count that we can report, and that's the number that we can use and say with confidence that's true. So we're just trying to get away from that running total piece. So it would mean that we would provide a report to you a following day, so it wouldn't include that case summary that you're used to getting at the end of the day, which will also help with staffing and other things, because that runs through a number of people before it ever goes to all of you. before it ever goes to all of you. So we're looking to update the webpage and provide that daily report the next day, based on the previous day, and report that out to you. And we can select a time that can work for everybody, we're thinking before noon. It may be able to be brought down a little bit, because we're removing some work off the epidemiologists in this process if we do this, but also giving them time to make sure our numbers are accurate.
So does that make a time delay, like are we reporting yesterday's news today?
Of sorts, of sorts, yes. But I, you know, I look at timeliness and accuracy, and I'm heavily weighted, I suppose, towards accuracy, right? And so I'm thinking that we will do our best to get that report done in the morning the day after as quickly as possible, so that the communications director can take that information and present it out to the public.
Yes, County Manager.
Madam Chair, thank you. The intent here is to simplify the process. Currently, you, the board, receives three different reports every day, one in mid-morning related to hospital capacities and activities, and then you receive two in the afternoon, sometimes at 5:00, sometimes at 6:00, sometimes a little bit later, related to the number of positives, the number of deaths, and so on. Those numbers, when reported that day, include some uncertainty, then is cleaned up in the next day report. What I would, what we're working on and want, what I would suggest to the board is we get one single report to the board per day. That would reflect the numbers of the day before, up to either 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the day. We will pick a cutoff time that you are aware of, so you know what time we stop. You'll receive the numbers in the very next day in mid-morning, after they've been reviewed, vetted, revised if necessary. So there is no change. That info then goes to our communication director, who will communicate it and share it with the public after the board has seen it. We, we're working on this as we speak. We have went over what we think is best. We will sit down with our communication director as well and discuss the format for the press release after this update and after the board has had an opportunity to weigh in. So again, the intent is truly to go, to get away from the three reports and provide them at various times of days, and in doing so, allow for the numbers to have discrepancies in them, to one report that you can be confident of, that you can, that you would trust is verified and vetted. And then we, in the process, eliminate any potential discrepancies too. So that's the goal, that's what we're working toward. You know, we've been at it for a while, we've learned a lot, all of us, and we've gotten a lot of great questions, suggestions, and direction from you, board members, as well as the media and the public. We're trying to incorporate all of those into one tool and one mean of communicating all these numbers. Thank you.
Okay, well, I do like the sound of that, because I think we get more reports than what's necessary, and I know each report takes a certain amount of man-hours to present. So, and I really, really think it's very important that we just have one source of information, and that that information should come from our health director. So if this helps clean it up and get the information out to the public in a timely manner, even if it is a few hours late, I can see the validity to it and the usefulness, but I'd still like to hear from our communications director and get his thoughts.
Certainly.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to point out that we have a regular scheduled board meeting at 9:00 a.m. on Monday morning, and providing us with the sample webpage during that time will not do us any good, we'll not have time to look at it. So I would suggest that the decision be pushed off until the Thursday COVID meeting.
Okay, I think that's probably a good idea. What do you think, Denise?
Absolutely, absolutely, and it gives us more time to present the package through IT and their time, and also to get the visuals prepared for you for the daily report function.
Thank you, Supervisor Gold.
Thank you.
Hello, Roger.
Chairman Bishop, yes.
Just wanted to clarify that this new process, it sounds really good. Can you make it work in your world with the way that you get the information out there in a news release?
I'm personally adamantly opposed to the portion about the press release being released the next morning. We had a lengthy discussion yesterday, Denise and I did. I'm not concerned about the other parts on the website, what goes on there, the rest of the plan. But to be truthful, what we're doing is, after a workday, instead of sending out a press release to the media, to the public, let them know where we are at that point. We're waiting 17 hours later to say, okay, this is what happened yesterday. Then they're not going to hear anything more until the next day. And that's completely the opposite of what we should be doing for the media and the public. These numbers are always going to be updated, they're always fluid, they're always changing, they're evolving in a situation where they change from hour to hour. So the next day, they'll be more accurate than the night before, but maybe at 11:00 in the morning, when we put these figures up, by 3:00, they're different, by 5:00, they're very different. And so we have to wait till the next day. I can't say how strongly, as a media guy, as a communications person, how wrong I believe this is. So I personally am opposed to that part of it, not any of the rest of it. But I think we should still have that release at the end of the day, approximately 6:00 to 7:00 in the evening, it's great. And it's been working for four and a half months pretty well. There are people out there that don't want to ever see the figures. There are people out there who want to know where we are right now. And it works very well at the end of a workday for the people that we're sending it to and for our people who've been working on it all day. And I don't know, I can't say it more strongly than that. We just strongly disagree. And again, only on the press release. I think it should stay as it is.
So can we do both?
I'm sorry?
Can we do both? Can we?
Not if we, not if we have the press release coming in the next morning. Now, if there's a press release at the end of the day, as it is right now, and you want to have an update the next morning, I'm, that's fine. I'm certainly for that.
So if we decided to go that route, would that take the health department personnel extra work to provide the information for your nighttime press release as well as the next day? Because I think we're trying to consolidate and simplify.
Well, we're doing, I think we're doing two things. We're trying to satisfy the interests and the demands of the board to know what's going on, and getting certain information and certain reports that the public is not privy to at this point. But we also want our constituents, the people out there, the media, know the latest that's going on. And I still believe at the end of each day is when to do it. And I'm putting in the time, I have not missed a single day since we started on this toward the end of March. Seven days a week, is it totally easy for me or anybody else? No. Do I think it's necessary and we should be doing, and it's the right thing? Absolutely.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted your input, because you are a media person. Mr. Elters, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Madam Chair. The intent was not to debate it here in front of you, the board. The intent is to stay the course with what we're doing today until we've presented a path, a solution to you that you can approve of and live with. So to that end, I'd like to take it back, discuss it internally with both Roger and Denise. And when we come back to you, we'll come back to you with a plan that covers both the press release, the public information going to the media, as well as the website and the daily report. Generally speaking, timeliness is critical in communicating with the media when you have an event that the public needs to know about. This is an ongoing event that has been with us for months, and it looks like it's going to be with us for a while longer. And while timeliness is critical, I agree with Roger, so is the accuracy of that information and the ability to minimize, in fact, eliminate discrepancy in the data. It's been, it's been confusing to all of us and the very public that we're trying to inform. So Roger, your point is well taken, and we just, we do need to sort through it and come back to you, the board, with a, with a complete and comprehensive plan that covers all three aspects of it, and make sure we have your approval and blessings before we go further. Thank you.
Great, well, I'm excited to see this, this cooperation of everybody getting together and coming up with a new format that works for everybody. So I thank you all for the hard work and continued work to get this done. And yes, we will look forward to next Thursday where it can be presented. Anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
It kind of goes, Ms. Burley touched on the case differential. I also noticed that we're talking about data corrections coming possibly this Friday again, is that true?
That would be true. So Supervisor Johnson and members of the board and County Manager Elters, typically, because of the system that we've been using, at the end of a month, we would reconcile our numbers, so all of the differences, the ins and the outs in cases, would be adjusted for on the last day of the month, and our plan was to do that on Friday. And so that information, the epidemiology staff is already working on that process to ensure that those numbers are reconciled.
And that will be done late on Friday, so once again, we get to all the abuse on the weekends while you guys are doing whatever you do?
Supervisor Johnson, not intentional, just the last day of the month happens to fall on Friday.
Now, you're saying with, if we went to this new proposal, we wouldn't have any more corrections?
Well, the corrections would be included in the counts every day. So in other words, if Bullhead City, currently the way we're doing it is if Bullhead City had 30 cases yesterday, and 10 came in that night, and we adjust the webpage to 40, that's what we report out, so it's on that rolling total. But the problem with that is that truly, maybe two of those cases are not ours. So we don't have a way to adjust it on that side, so that's where we get the discrepancy. But in, in the report that you are receiving every morning, that information is clean, that information is the rolling total, so you don't see an exact number increase from the day before that is included in that, in that daily summary at the end of a day.
Okay, I guess it'll, maybe it'll make it clearer when we see everything in-
I believe so.
Picture form.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, that's the only questions I have right now, but I have some others later, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Angus.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to record that, you know, for me, I'm most important, first and foremost, the information that goes out to the public. Secondly, the information that can only be seen by us, which eventually, I would hope that would be a part of what we release to the public as well. Thank you.
So I couldn't understand what Supervisor Angus said, but you nodded your head, so you're, you're good with the comment?
I believe so.
Okay.
But I can, yes. The other, we just received notice, North Country Healthcare is actually watching the presentation here, so they have offered to get us that information to, to all of us by the end of the day, so as soon as possible, actually, so.
Thank you.
We'll be able to answer those questions about the asymptomatic cases and so forth for the testing events.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have some questions if she's done with her presentation, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
On the COVID report you send us daily, I noticed the hospitals are not updating their pending test reports to us. They haven't updated in over a week, do you know why that is?
Well, we rely on them to provide us with that information, but it's not mandatory through any, through the governor's executive order or any other organization to do that. So we have to rely on them to provide that for us. And keeping in mind that testing information is only a, it's only a piece, so realizing that that does not count some of the private provider testing and other testing that goes on through some of the urgent cares in the community, so it's only a partial picture of actual testing in our communities.
Right, I understand that. It's just that it gives us kind of an idea of, you know, how many tests are sitting out there.
Yeah, I totally understand, but we've, that's been a difficult number to keep updated.
All right, did you have any luck with getting the hospitals to report on the number of COVID patients in their inpatient beds?
Patients, in inpatient beds, and it was just inpatient beds, correct? Not ICU beds?
Well, we get a lot of questions, well, I'm assuming that all the board members do. It's like, well, how many beds are being taken up by COVID? Because we get a lot of, oh, I understand, they're flying people in, and now we can't use our own hospitals. And they do get the report you give us that says we have so many people in ICU, and seven of them are COVID. But the inpatient beds, I don't know if they're taking up a lot of that space or not.
I understand, I understand, yes. I mean, we do have that information for ICU beds, and we have the number of admissions per day, but we don't have a specific number of admissions just into their general population versus an ICU bed.
Okay, yeah, I just thought it might help us to see, you know, how the trend is going, if we're going up or down. On Monday, on the COVID report, you listed at the very bottom a percentage positive. What data figures are you using to come up with that number? As I've seen varying percentage positives, all of them always seem to be a few percentages off.
So is that the percentage of testing? Or percentage?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, okay. So the percentage of testing, and I have to think about my presentation on Monday, so I apologize, I'm not recollecting that right off the top of my head. And so that was positivity rate of tests?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And just for your awareness, we- And just for your awareness, we modified our testing numbers on our web page. We pulled that information from the Arizona Department of Health Services as a general rule, and we have some other work that goes on and calculations behind the scenes. But what was up there previously before today included serology testing. And we don't usually, that's not something that we generally count. So you'll see a fairly large drop in test numbers because we modified it, and there's a disclaimer on there as of today. These numbers reflect only PCR testing. So you'll see about a 3,000 case or test drop in that. But in terms of the positivity rate, you know, generally, we're using what numbers we have available to us from both ADHS and from our hospitals to generate that number. And we would like to actually just use ADHS numbers for that because I think we know if we focus, and they have it broken out by either all tests or PCR or serology. And I think if we just use the PCR calculation and their data, I think we will have the most up-to-date data, both on the number of tests and on the percentage positivity. And we would like to kind of stick with that.
All right. When we first started reporting, we decided to only report the confirmed cases and deaths, which made our numbers off a little bit from what the state had. Lately, it seems we're getting more and more off on our case counts and deaths from what the state's reports. Now, you covered the cases, but the deaths, can you explain to the public again why the state has so many more deaths for COVID than we do?
Certainly. Absolutely. So the state considers counts probable deaths in with their count, and we do not. We only count confirmed cases. So if they have, based on their scientific, their background, you know, their expertise, if they see that this person, for example, had COVID symptoms, and though they didn't do a PCR test on that person, if they believe that that person, there's a presumption that that person passed away from a COVID illness, then they will include it as a probable case. And we do not count those in our counts.
And then maybe you can clarify the updated CDC guidelines on quarantine and isolations. I believe that your comments on Monday might have confused some people. I know it confused me a little into thinking that now we just need to isolate for 24 hours. In the updated CDC guidelines for isolation, I noticed that someone with a compromised immune system who contracts COVID is required to isolate for 20 days now. Well, I understand that the symptomatic folks, why is the CDC requiring it for folks who are asymptomatic but have compromised immune systems? And does the compromised immune system play a role in how much they can spread the virus?
So I'll start with the first question.
Okay.
And then work me through them, okay? If you don't mind Supervisor Johnson?
All right.
Okay. So first question was about the new standards, the new guidelines for release from isolation. And what they are, are 10 days and 10 days and 24 hours fever-free with no medicine. In the past, that had been 72 hours fever-free, no medicine. So that's been a change. Additionally, it's an improvement in symptoms. Before, it was improvement in respiratory symptoms because it was primarily a respiratory, thought to be a respiratory illness. But now there are many other symptoms that have been listed now on the CDC website. So they wanted to make it more general in their language. So secondly, for those that are, I haven't done a lot of research on the asymptomatic requirements for CDC or the, those that have underlying health conditions. So I might need to get back with you so I can have a more educated answer on that question.
Also on Monday, going forward, we would have, you know, the additional folks that you have. And I know we, or you decided that you were going to just put maybe one person on checking with the people that have, you know, long since passed their quarantine period. Why are we still getting under investigation for 90% of our cases reported to us every day?
Certainly. So in that case, many of those reports are coming in on that day, and they come in at various times during the day. So we pull those reports out at 4 o'clock. And if there's a data drop, for example, at a later time in the afternoon, those investigators will not have had time to call all those people. And sometimes it may take us a day or two still to call people. It's not a 24-hour turnaround process. That time is improving as these investigators continue to come onboard, but it may take us a day or two. And just some other thoughts here is that sometimes we do not get contact information. We don't get an address. We don't get a phone number, or it's incomplete, or it's no longer in service, or there's a number of reasons. And we have to track down that data if we can to get to them. We also rely on people answering their phone and calling us back. And that doesn't happen sometimes. And so in those, all those reasons give us somewhat incomplete information. Just the sheer number of cases that are coming in each day make it much more of a challenge to provide you with that more complete information on a daily basis.
All right. And I don't know that we went over this before, but I've noticed how Bullhead is continuing to keep their case numbers high compared to Havasu and Kingman. And the only difference I can see would be that Bullhead has law on the casinos. Do you think that's the reason why their numbers are staying high?
Well, I think that can contribute to that for sure. I mean, if those continue, if those casinos are operational, you have a large influx in and out of people and traffic. And I know they're doing what they can to mitigate any concerns about the spread, but you still have a lot of people in an area, and it could certainly contribute. But, you know, we're still going back and seeing a lot of these cases related to families and get-togethers. So, you know, you weigh all that in, and I think you just know it's everywhere, or it's potentially everywhere, and if you're not taking those precautionary steps, there's a very good chance, so.
Thank you. My last question, we've been getting a lot of questions, probably all of us. And in recent days, we've seen the resurgent of claims that the hydroxychloroquine should be used or could be used to fight the COVID-19. However, Governor Ducey issued an executive order back in April making it so it can only be used under a doctor's order. And last month, the FDA pulled their emergency order for the drug to treat COVID-19 in hospital settings due to the numerous scientific studies and peer-reviewed reports that the drug does not work to treat COVID-19. What is the county's position on that?
We do not recommend the use of that to treat COVID-19. I don't believe the science is there, and it's not recommended at this point.
All right. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus.
Denise, who doesn't recommend it? Just the CDC? And who? Is that, are those the two agencies that don't recommend? Because it's been, everyone knows, it's been in the news lately. There's a lot of differing opinions about this drug that is used safely for many, many other things. So do you foresee that order changing, or more and more doctors going to use it? It's an unexpected, I know that the other drug, the remsetivir, I'm not sure how I pronounce it, is a very expensive drug, and now they're finding that there may be kidney, liver issues, either kidney or liver issues after using it. So none of these things are approved because it's happened so fast. So how could they be so sure about the hydroxychloroquine, which many people have said has saved their lives? So I just want to know why you're so adamant that you think it shouldn't be used.
Certainly. I appreciate that. Both the, well, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention does not recommend the use of the, and I'm not going to say it correctly, so the hydro, help me out.
Yeah, chloroquine.
Thank you.
Hydroxychloroquine.
Thank you. Yes. Perfect. And so, you know, those are certainly topics that we continue to circle back to as new research is presented and that information, that research is vetted. We will certainly bring more back to you, but at this point, that particular drug is not recommended for use in the treatment of COVID-19.
So, Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gold.
Since I don't believe that the county, Mojave County Health Department is in the business of recommending treatment, what we might say is that the CDC does not recommend that treatment.
Certainly. It's a good point.
Thank you, ma'am.
Supervisor Gold, thank you. Okay. Mr. Essman, do you have any comment on that?
I have nothing to add. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a healthcare professional.
Okay. I think that's a good point. We should take the recommendations of the professionals.
Certainly.
And that's coming from the CDC. Is that correct, Denise?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I was just kidding on my last question. I missed one. The CDC has just released a study that shows a third of all non-hospitalized COVID-19 survivors are experiencing symptoms beyond their 30 days. I've been contacted by a few people in Havasu who said that they're going on their 30th, 45th, and 60th day of still feeling symptoms from COVID. Is that what we're seeing at the Health Department on our contact tracing?
We are seeing some of those cases, yes. And some of those experiences, for sure. Yes. I couldn't give you a percentage necessarily at this point, but, and I don't know if I would have a way to track that in that form, but we are experiencing that as well.
Okay. We also, Havasu Regional has said that they're seeing reinfections. And I know there's a debate on whether some are reinfection or reoccurrence of the virus. In the talks with other health departments and epidemiologists in the community at the point, at this point in time, what do you think is happening with reinfections, re-incurrences, or maybe both?
Well, I still believe they're doing a lot of research on a person's reinfection and that reinfection rate and that possibility. So I don't have any specific information that I can share, but we have seen examples of that and know that it can happen. And it may be a result of that person having underlying health conditions. So they're compromised, so that their immune system hasn't built enough up, if that's, and that's another question, right? I mean, is, they're working on defining what immunity is around COVID-19. And I think there's still a lot of information and data that they're looking for around what that, what we build up in our systems as a result of having and acquiring the virus and getting through that on the other side.
Okay, that's interesting, Denise. If someone gets COVID-19, they don't naturally have an immunity at this point that we are able to confirm. Is that correct?
Well, the antibody tests really can help assist with that, but what they're not certain of at this point, what they're researching as well, is how much immunity? Is it three months? Is it six months? Is it a year? And so that really plays into a vaccine. And the effectiveness of a vaccine, is it similar to a flu shot that you get every year? Is it more frequently? Is it more effective in a longer term? So all great questions and all questions that have yet to be answered by science yet.
So if you've had COVID-19, the CDC still recommends that you proceed cautiously and wear a face mask when you're out in public and social distance and all those things?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Any final comments?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus.
Denise, so this is whole conversation. Have we had any cases in Mojave County where people were reinfected?
Yes.
Reinfected? So you knew that, they were infected, they tested positive, and then they tested negative, and then they tested positive?
I know that the CEO of Havasu Regional Medical Center shared during the press conference that they did have a reinfection. I don't know if, I don't know the timeframe, for example. I believe the person, if I remember correctly, he mentioned the person tested positive in March, finished their isolation period in March, and then retested again in May, in late May, and was found to be positive again. So.
Well, okay. So that's interesting. So that it could last. It might not go away and then come back. It's just interesting because that's not what, again, the research I'm doing. And just for the record, if anyone cares, I feel fine. That's all.
Okay. If there's no further comments, questions, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Supervisor Angus.